The one that's struggling is Florida, all the meeting for the month of after November will come to Florida. And on tonight, our indication will be given by Pastor Beth Woldra, First United Methodist Church, 121 Harrison here in Camden, Arkansas.
I want us to pause for a moment of silence. On my way here, I saw the beautiful full moon over the Washtot River. And it reminds me of how fortunate we are to live in such a beautiful spot. Let us pray. Gracious God, we have entrusted the stewardship of this wonderful town we call home to the elected leaders in this room. We thank you for the economic leadership who have invested in the renewal and restoration of Camden so that we might be known as a place of hospitality and opportunity. We thank you for the educational leaders who work with our children to create paths of learning for every child from every economic background. We thank you for our hospital, our clinics, our health professionals who provide care in every stage of life. We thank you for the faith leaders in this community for sharing the good news of your mercy and grace and for their ministry of standing with those in the margins. It takes a village of people from all walks of life working together to create a place where all may thrive. As we work tonight, each from his and her own area of expertise, let us build trust among ourselves by putting truth and integrity first. Hold us accountable to one another as you gave us two ears and one mouth. May we use them proportionally, ever more willing to listen than we are to speak. We ask these things in the precious name of your son. Amen.
Will you please remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated at this time. Our City Clerk is now sworn.
Lindsey?
Here.
Dow?
Here.
Askew?
Here.
Simmons?
Here.
For?
Here.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Smith?
Here.
Argid?
Here.
Mayor Lot?
We have before us the minutes. If you've had an opportunity to read our minutes from October 3, if you would entertain a motion.
Set.
We moved and by the second, those in favor, use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use the same sign. Ayes have it. We also have before us the financial report. And if you have an opportunity to take a motion.
Second.
As we move and by the second, those in favor.
This session?
Sir?
Discussion.
Discussion.
I'm just curious on the A and P Commission. I'll wait until we get dropped in.
All right, discussion, those in favor, use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use the same sign. Again, the ayes have it. At this time, we're going to prepare to open the floor for audience members, audience participation. And you're welcome to approach the mic. The microphone is on. It is on for recording purposes and not for amplification. So if you'd be so kind as to not touch it, just state your name and your address for the record. And please keep your comments to five minutes or less. Mrs., uh...
I was asking, do you want the people?
You can, you're welcome to help us out with that.
Okay.
You have a wonderful system there, sir.
Okay, well, if I'm in charge, nobody speaks.
Is that the list?
Yes, these are the lists.
Those are just the people who are present. Now, those people want to speak.
There are people that want to speak. Yes, sir.
Yes, okay.
I have two on here that I know don't want to. Other than that, these people were signed up to speak.
In the interest of saving time, I could.
All the person, Bell has asked to speak first, if you could.
Okay.
Do I need to go ahead?
You're welcome to skip from the seats.
Uh, my name is James Bell. I have a feeling most of you are here because of an ordinance that I submitted to this council for the establishment of an entertainment district. I've heard a lot over the past few months. Many people are for it, and there are many people against it.
Can you speak a little louder to the people out here in the back?
Yes, ma'am, I will try. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Could you stand, please?
Hi, and sing? Okay, you don't want that. So, as I said, I submitted an ordinance for the establishment of an entertainment district. Many of you know many of the basics. There are certain details that have gotten lost in the conversation. That is my fault for not properly stating what it was meant to be and for not fully communicating what the purpose of it was. I've been in conversation with many people, and I have decided that tonight I am going to withdraw the ordinance to be resubmitted at a later time. Pastor Jerry Abels of the Victory Church has agreed to collaborate with me on addressing some of the concerns. I look forward to working with Pastor Abels to develop something that everyone in the community can feel safe and secure and enjoy. So, thank you Pastor Abels for agreeing to do this with me. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
I have a question.
When you look at the minutes from September.
Not with me, they're in the office.
But, excuse me a minute.
Or would I need to make a motion to table?
Well, that's what I want to ask. Are we tabling this, or are you withdrawing your motion?
Right now, I'm straight up withdrawing it.
You're withdrawing it.
Does anybody remember who seconded his motion when he introduced this? Would anybody?
I thought it was you. He wasn't?
I don't remember.
Well, good looking. Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
What did you want to speak about? Sorry, I can't read your handwriting.
Okay, it's just the lake. I'm not going to be here very long. I'm a fisherman here. Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry. Larry Mitchell, 649 Magnolia Road, Camden, Arkansas. I just have some questions. They have shipped the lake down where you can't get Little Johnson. And there's a county road out there. My question is, does a person that owned this property where the lake is, does he own that county road? Because if he does, why had the county been cleaning that road up and everything? So now, if he owned that, shouldn't he be responsible for paying for cleanup?
Judge McAdoo, I was in the vehicle with him when he was dealing with some of that. And he's working on that right now. So I don't want to speak on it because I don't want to speak out of turn. I wasn't on the phone call to hear the other side. But I know for a fact Judge McAdoo is currently working to fix that particular issue. And you're absolutely correct. That is a county road, and the fence is up, so.
Did you, excuse me, did he say Little Johnson?
Little Johnson.
Little Johnson.
That's right, yes, sir. Judge McAdoo is working.
Thank you.
Mayor? Is the county road fenced? County road is fenced?
It's a fence across that road, I think. That's what people are calling it. Some people, some...
County in the city on right of ways. Anything that pass that right of way is owned by a person or an entity. And they have the right to block that road at any point in time that they wish to. That's a state, that is a law in the state of Arkansas.
Okay. Well, Judge McAdoo is going to be a better source than me for that particular issue. And he seems to know that. I don't know anything except what I've just seen.
Everything else was for the entertainment district.
Everything else.
Yes, sir.
There is, what did we decide on that motion?
Motion by Alderman Bell and then Alderman Simmons to withdraw seconds.
Making a motion?
We have a motion to withdraw.
I make a motion to withdraw the ordinance 1819.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. This is a order, isn't it?
Throw hard, bro.
Yeah, we got to do roll call.
Yes, sir. Simmons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Askew?
Yes.
Argid?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
As I said, nobody else is on, I'm going to finish with it. Nobody else is on to speak about anything?
Everything was for the entertainment district except for Mr. Mitchell.
Anybody, anybody need to come to the mic before they shut it down?
Is there anyone for audience participation that, did y'all sign in?
Some of them was probably late.
Yes, sir.
I did sign in. Scott Knight, 15516 Edgewood. I came prepared to speak against, but I felt just as much. I need to get up here and say thank you. Thank you, Angel, everyone. I don't want to say I don't know you, but I want to say thank you for standing up and doing what you did. That took a lot, and I'm excited about the future of our city. I graduated from Fairview High School in 1986. Been here almost my entire life, except when I was young for ministry and work and different things. And I see a spark in our city, and I'm very excited about it. And I do believe there is a path to where you're trying to go and where we're trying to go as a city. And I just want to say thank you because I know you've probably heard a lot of the other. But thank you for everything that you're doing. I do believe our city has a great future. And I just want you to know that myself, our church I attend, they are all praying for you now as we speak. And I just want to say thank you. Thank you very much.
I feel like I got more skin in this game than anybody in this room, all right? So, I'm for it. Maybe not necessarily the way that it was presented, but I'm definitely for it because I'm for economic development. What economic development means is more money for schools and roads and other things that work in our town. And anytime that we can get somebody to stay here on Friday and Saturday night or to come here as a tourist or what have you to spend dollars in our town, puts more dollars in our town to pay our firefighters, our policemen, and it makes the bottom line of any business located in Camden, not just in downtown Camden, any business in Camden, more viable and more potential for success. I've rehabbed five buildings in our downtown. Postmaster's Grill being the one that anybody can frequent on any given day that we're open. The rest of them are commercial or residential. I have 17 units. People live in downtown. Travis has a bunch more. And there's a bunch more on the table to develop. And I've got three other buildings that are purchased and gutted and ready to get started on. And just when I get enough time and enough money scrounged up, we're going to do some more. But this is a small progressive path that we really, really do need to consider. And it's not going to make a tremendous difference to our bottom line. But anytime we get one more dollar spent in our town, that's that much more tax base and that much more potential for more dollars to be invested.
Good evening. Eric Parent from Nani Chapel Creek Road, Camden, Arkansas. I also just wanted to say one thing. I hope that, I applaud you for being willing to compromise and continue down the stretch to try to find a resolution that works for everybody. I would be happy to participate in that if it comes to that. I am also for, and my only statement would be that I would encourage people to maintain open minds and an entrepreneurial vision for what the entertainment district could represent. While no collection of individuals on the planet have ever unanimously agreed on anything, progressive ideas, like most endeavors, begin with individuals willing to take a risk. Is this a major risk? Of course not. The beauty of a legislative process is that it allows to be walked back if the pain threshold outweighs the benefits. One can certainly agree with the needs of people to fill their environment provides a high degree of security and safety perceived or otherwise. That is right above Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Right after food and water, people want to feel safe. And that's a good thing. Which is even more, the reality though is that the world's a much safer place than most can appreciate, which is even more difficult to fathom given the continuous media barrage of all things wicked. Crime rates in the U.S. degrading rapidly in two decades along with violent crimes. The point being, the freedoms we sacrifice are often surrendered unnecessarily. Critical aspect of the entertainment district is that it has something for everyone. And I hope you all do seek to find a common ground. But let me tell you just a few pieces of reality whenever you start making that decision. I signed for tens of thousands, tens of thousands of dollars a year in expense reports for people we entertain downtown in restaurants. That number is not escalating. It's dwindling. More and more are visitors, our customers, our partners, our business teammates are staying in El Dorado. I have no skin in that game. I have no skin in the game. Where they stay doesn't matter to me. It shouldn't matter to all of you. It should. That's tax revenue. The other reality is that with organic growth in the park, I'm interviewing 20, 30 people a month. The pool has dried up in Camden. A lot of these hundreds of jobs are going to go to people who don't currently live here. When I sit down and have a discussion with them about where they're going to live, where do you want them to live? Most of these people are in their 20s and 30s. And right now, I'm telling you, it ain't Camden. I want you to consider reality. Reality of the situation. Where do you want these people spending their dollars? Where do you want these dollars going? I love the kids. The kids are fine. They've got school, after-school sports. Our churches do a wonderful job, volunteer activities, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. Outside of plucking them out from around town and sticking them into a dorm where we can watch them and really alleviate anyone's responsibility to parent, they're doing okay. The kids will be okay, trust me. There won't be Armageddon. The lava will flow into streets. The sky will fall, cats and dogs living together. It's not going to happen. This is a very simple thing. And it's always got the ability to walk back. So, I encourage you to find common ground of ours and whatnot because I, willing but rare patriot, will enjoy it. My customers will enjoy it. But in the end, I would encourage you to think about the freedom choice. I'm sure he wasn't thinking of entertainment districts when he said it. Or maybe I said by, maybe he was, considering he was by nature a fairly festive individual, Ben Franklin instead. Those who sacrifice liberty in the name of safety deserve neither. So, thank you. I apologize, I have a freight number to do, so thank you very much.
Mr. Gentleman?
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
My name is Manfred Stinkhan, 12600 Lydick Canyon Drive, right in Camden. I come before you today in two capacities. First, as a commissioner on the planning and zoning and board for Justina. And the second, as a citizen of Camden. This matter was brought before us at the commission. We did not have a lot of information at the time. Thank you for saying what you said. And thank you for everybody for understanding that more work needs to be done, that there is common ground for no matter what issues we're faced with. As a commissioner, because we did not have a lot of information, I ended up contacting other cities that have put an entertainment district in place to check and see how they were doing. First place I called was Mountain Home in El Dorado. I reached out to the chief of police, reached out to the mayor. The response I got from them was they haven't had any issues at all. At Mountain Home, it's still fairly young idea, but they so far have no issues whatsoever. Whether it helped or hurt the issue of their situation in general, they really couldn't answer, but they haven't had any trouble. So that's one thing I wanted to mention as a commissioner because I did find myself in a position where I had to do that homework. Now, as a citizen, the first thing I noticed when I walked in today, all the familiar faces, people who have lived here all their lives have spent countless unpaid hours in promoting this town, in saving this town, in putting in an effort to make this town a better place. Something else that I've noticed as a resident, as a business owner in town, as an entrepreneur, one thing has gone unmentioned for a very long time. Do y'all remember two years back, four, five, six years back, all over the country, there were a lot of police riots? There were a lot of police brutality cases, town being burnt? A lot of uproar like that? What were we doing in that time in Camden? With the smug, we had no such issues. That credit goes to this man right here. Kick over it. He knows what he's doing. With the cooperation of the police, with a workshop where we can look at this entertainment district. I like certain things one way, somebody else likes certain things their way. Okay, we can find a common ground. If something is not to our liking, this council, through this council, we have the ability to self-govern. We can change things. We can modify, we can amend. These two, the council, chief of police, police department, very important and not so much celebrated parts of our town, which I think deserves some credit. That's just my observation. Now, some of you know I am in the wines and spirit business. I'm talking about stealing the game. Without taking too much time, I will give you a little bit insight into the wines and spirits industry. For restaurants downtown, they sell wines, beers, and spirits. Their wines and their beers, they come from their wholesalers. They don't come from any wines and spirit stores. And their spirits can come from the spirit store. But generally speaking, for easy mathematics, let's say there's 100 people in a given area. The more number of people socialize in restaurants and bar, the sales in spirit stores go down. When the access to restaurants and social avenues is less, the sales in wines and spirit stores go up. So really, as a business owner, I stand to lose if this is passed. But I also know, as a citizen and as somebody who observes, each town, and the gentleman before me went over many points along the lines which I have in mind. Each town has various sections, and our churches do a great job. For example, I'm a guy who doesn't understand art. But if you go to well-developed towns, there's dedicated art sections. It's something I don't understand, but we need that. If we need a thriving community, an entertainment district could be a good tool we can use to make that happen.
Hi, James. I just want to say thank you again for agreeing to...
Will you please state your name and address for us?
Shawia Walker, 2720 Mimosa Ave, Camden, Arkansas.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for agreeing to listen to the people and to come up with a better plan. And when you come up with this plan, I just want to urge you to think about the children who come to these events. Because I have a baby now, and I enjoy bringing her to First Friday. And if this is one of those events where you want to introduce alcohol, I just ask that you find a way to keep people who are drinking away from our children. Because I don't want to have to introduce her to people who have drank too much. And then, I do have a question for you, Chief Lady. What are you going to do about people who have drank too much?
The second we didn't have, it's going to be against the law.
No, they're already drunk.
You can't, you can't, you can't talk to him. You can't talk to him.
But you guys will work with the law enforcement to try and make sure that people are not already drinking at these events if they're going to do so.
Yes, ma'am. At the expense of some of the businesses being closed down if they get someone who's already drunk, another drink, so.
Yeah, that was one of my other questions. How are we going to make sure that people don't drink too much and that it doesn't get to the chief?
We haven't figured it out yet.
Okay. I just want these points to be in there when you do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for audience participation. Do I have to say it again? Do I still ask for it?
Can.
Is anyone else for audience participation, last call? Thank you so much. We're ready for the mayor's report. I'm going to forego a report tonight except to say I'm happy about a democratic process. Let's go to old businesses. Oh, no.
No, that was...
No old businesses. Old businesses settle. Yes, sir.
I'm making a motion, we take a five-minute recess and let all these people excuse themselves because they don't want to hear about our gravel roads and...
No, people are finally participating.
They won't hurt each other trying to get out the door.
Have a motion on the floor to allow a five-minute recess for those who came...
Joe, you can go move your card now.
I'll second it.
Close the parking spot.
Keep cutting the wood. Keep cutting the wood.
I want you to be sure that we table it. We table it so that I can back it up. But we, here you go, Danny. You know what I said the first time? Terry, you know, when you get drunk, you gotta open up. You gotta make money, you gotta live that life. It just, Terry, well, all you need is...
Chief, I'm sure I'm ready.
I talked a lot with you about it. Give it over, Danny. But we, here you go, Danny. You know what I said the first time? I do a rap, I'm scary, I'm like... And Terry, you know, when you get drunk, you gotta open up. You gotta make money, you gotta live that life. It just, Terry, well, all you need is...
What's wrong with your man, sir?
He's just a little nuts and...
And if we know, he's gonna tell him if he says something, he's gonna hate us.
Yes, sir.
He made a prank. I was gonna say, I was frank. I don't want to be about to say.
I appreciate it.
That's good. That's gonna be like, you're doing this every morning.
That's the city church.
And sometimes they get to a point where you have to...
Mr. Friday. He was a lady, he gave me a... He was out. Hey, Mr. Friday. You know, you were running a little lady, I'm glad you didn't get out of here. So you get a full chair.
Chair.
He's on love time.
Some people gotta get up the highway.
Let me have a gavel.
Hey, Joe. Let me have a gavel. Let me have a gavel.
We got one more.
All right.
Yeah.
Do you want us to go back and enjoy it?
Yes, sir.
No, you can have those back in.
All right, let's go. Ladies and gentlemen, if you please take a seat. We have a new business tonight. If you're not going to take a seat, you, uh, will you please give us an opportunity?
Close the door.
Thank you. New business, resolution number 3819. Award bid for asphalt and pavement.
Introduced by?
Introduced by the mayor.
Thank you, sir. Resolution 3819, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, awarding the bid for the purchase of asphalt and paving for the Public Works Street Department.
Motion to approve? It's moved. Moving to second, I'm ready for discussion. Yes, sir.
I was just curious, I guess, did Shamir work this up before he left?
Shamir worked this up before he left.
Correct.
Right. I'm just curious, I'm kinda looking at the way these numbers, and I know that my, my work didn't need near the work that some of the others did. I'm curious for JoJo, because I know he's been talking about Maplewood Chestnut over there for, like, do you think all that new asphalt is gonna smooth out the things or like, have they got a special process to, you know, for the...
Concrete.
They're putting asphalt over the concrete.
Yeah.
And I'm just curious if you think it's gonna still have waves in it.
Well, Mr. Franklin. I don't know about the waves, but these streets that we're looking at, I rode around with Shamir, and it's not just what I wanted, it's what he suggested, him and Mr. Franklin as well. And I'm so glad whether it, it will hit some of that. It will hit some of that.
I'm just wondering if that was discussed, because that's been the thing that, I used to live on Chestnut Street, and it was always, had that gallop in it. And yes, the concrete was poured in the thirties or forties, and it's, the surface was still good, but the creases didn't quite match up.
The gallop then got real worse. But, but, but the paving and what Shamir, I mean, he looked it over real good, and yes, he said it can be done, and we agreed it does need asphalt.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I rode with Shamir and Mr. Franklin, and we were very in-depth in that war three where we looked at. And yeah, I could've used more, but, but I understood we got four wars. And we had to try to tally up, but, and I'm like Joe, I'm in a situation in war three where nothing been done. And I look back and it had been a long, long time to say I'm happy. No, you know, I'm not gonna say I'm happy, but I'm pleased getting something. And with the way we looked at it, that's, and I liked the way they got it outlined here. We had only really one overlay there, and the rest of them was chip sealed. And we're still looking at one that it yet to be determined on Mr. Franklin's decision on how we're gonna do it. But I was, I was real pleased with what we got because we haven't had anything in over twenty years.
And the street that you had mentioned in is progress.
I had told Mr. Franklin I'd speak with him about it, and he informed me that it was on his system, but it just didn't come out on here.
Oh, is that...
And it was a, as me and L.E. talked about at the last meeting, it's a connector street.
Yes, sir. Is there any more discussion? Those in favor, please use the voting sign of aye. Those opposed, use the same sign. Eyes have it, man. Thank you. I'm ready for resolution number 3919. Award, that's right. Okay, award, award the bid for the purchase and installation of chip seal surfacing.
The other one was asphalt, and this one's for chips. That's where you're confused.
Thank you. And this one again is introduced by the mayor.
Resolution 3919, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, awarding the bid for the purchase of installing chip seal surfacing for the Public Works Street Department.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moving to second, I'm ready for discussion. Those in favor, please use the voting sign of aye. Those opposed, we use the same sign. We're ready now for resolution number 4019, A.D.E.Q. contract.
Resolution, sorry. Resolution 4019, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality for care of the Class Four landfill pursuant to Arkansas Code.
The motion to approve? It's moved. And promptly accepted, I'm ready for discussion. Those in favor, please use the voting sign of aye. Those opposed, we use the same sign. We also have before this record, resolution number 4119, the budget introduced by the mayor.
Resolution 4119, a resolution providing for and adopting for the city budget of Camden, Arkansas, an annual operating budget for the twelve months beginning January 1st, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2020, and appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure therein provided for.
Motion to approve?
Well, I'll make that motion to approve so that we can discuss it.
Okay. It's been approved? Second. Now, I'm ready for discussion. Those in favor, please use the voting sign of aye. Those opposed, we use the same sign. We also have before this record, resolution number 4119, the budget introduced by the mayor.
Resolution 4119, a resolution providing for and adopting for the city budget of Camden, Arkansas, an annual operating budget for the twelve months beginning January 1st, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2020, and appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure therein provided for.
Motion to approve?
Well, I'll make that motion to approve so that we can discuss it.
Okay. It's been approved? Second. Second. Now, I'm ready for discussion.
At our committee meetings, which most of us were here, because I think they wanted to visit this, so I don't know that they've really seen the package yet. And let me say, I was going home after our committee meetings the other night, and we had basically, the group was here, agreed that we could go along with the pay thing to set the fire chief's salary and look at doing a major payroll overhaul next year when we did study it properly. And Jim Green made a compelling argument for why we needed to go ahead and set the pay rates there at this thing, and I agreed to it, and I'm gonna stand by my agreement that I'll vote for it, but as I was going home, I regretted having agreed to that. And I'm thinking, I'm saying, you know, we're letting the fire department rates run the whole budget for the city. And I'm kinda thinking, this is kinda got the cart pulling the horse here. And I'm saying, I said I'd do it, so I'll agree to do it, but I'm, I ain't liking what I said. So I'm hoping we can consider a little bit of the impact on that before we finalize this thing. Anyway, so that's what I had said, maybe we can vote on this in December if we want to and learn a little more. The other thing was that I asked, I said, I want to see what the A and P Commission's budget funding is gonna be, not just the dollars, I want to know what projects they're throwing in there, and I want to see the job description for the new employee.
I'm sorry. He wasn't here, let him go. And thank you for that, and I wouldn't be here Thursday on that. I've been looking into what we discussed the last time, had a few questions about it, and just looking at this tonight, don't have enough time to digest it, and I would like for us to, you know, put it off and table it and chance to look at it and maybe come back to the drawing board because, like you said...